I call this December 12, 2016, Order Selectmen Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing is the approval of the minutes on November 28, 2016, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move the approved minutes of...
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Okay. It's now past the hour seven o'clock. Bill Ferrer, Town Auditor, presentation of FY 2016 Audit Report. Bill, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. We are gonna hopefully make this work. Great. Okay. So, we're gonna start with just a little bit of an overview of the audit. And as we're happy to report every year, there were no major audit adjustments that were required, other than the many adjustments we have to make to get from your budgetary and state-required presentation to what's in the financial statements. When we record all the things like the OPEB liability and the pension liability. But otherwise, the general ledger was perfect, and we didn't have to make any changes. In terms of the testing we do on your internal controls and your compliance with laws and regulations, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which you always wanna see, and what we call no reportable conditions on compliance with laws and regulations. So, there was nothing that you need to be aware of as a board that came up during the audit. The Audit Report was unqualified, of course, as always. And the big difference between this year and last year was the 18.8 million school project expenses. So if you're looking town-wide at the gross numbers, at least on the revenue and expense side, you're gonna see a big change because of that. But otherwise, it was a pretty status quo year. So, this should... First set of numbers we show is, since the general fund is really the largest, you know, your largest fund and is really a big chunk of what's in the financial statements, particularly the fund-based statements, I like to show a five-year trend analysis, just to show how the revenue, the gross revenue numbers and the gross expense numbers have changed. And I think that the one thing, if you kind of, there's a lot of numbers up there, I realize, but if you look at the five-year average line, 'cause you really wanna look at things over a period of time, not any one year. And in general, when I look at the schedule, I like to see something in the range of 3% to 5%. If the percentage change year to year is too low, you start to question, does the community have the ability to fund their ongoing needs? Whether that's salary increases, or addressing the long-term liabilities, keeping up with maintenance and capital. So you don't want the number to be too low. And then on the other side, if it's too high, you think, alright, is the community gonna be able to sustain this kind of growth year after year? So, I like that, you know, sort of talk about that sweet spot between 3% and 5%, and you're doing fine, 'cause you're right, kinda right in the middle of that. There are a couple of numbers up there that you can see that are a little out of that box, and so John had asked smartly if I would put some notes down the bottom, just to explain why you were a little higher in '14 and '16 on the revenues and in '15 on the expenses. And just, you know, each year, there is an explanation. So in '14, your revenues were up 5.3%, which is a little on the higher end, but that was the first year of mail tax, and you had a really good year on excise taxes. In jumping over to '15 on the expense side, you had a 6% increase, but that was when you started doing the OPEB fund and the road maintenance article. Is it an article or part of the budget?
The operating budget. The bigger piece of that 5.6%, if you remember, what kind of winter did we have that year? Blizzard after blizzard, and we were, you know, we had federal aid, we had all sorts of snow and ice, overages to the tune of over $400,000. That's what drove that number. And obviously, there's nothing you can do about that, other than, you know, luckily we have reserves to take care of it, and then we apply for, you know, any kind of state and federal grants or aid that we get back. But that's what drove that number.
And starting to address the OPEB liability was, you know, was such a positive thing, and that, so that started in '15 as well. And then in '16, again, you were up at 6.4% on the revenue side, and this is an accounting thing, but you received a land grant for, help me, $400,000?
$375,000.
$375,000. And for some reason, you know, normally when you get a grant, it just goes in the grant fund, so you wouldn't see this in the general fund numbers. For some reason, the state made you bring it into the general fund, and then town meeting voted to transfer it out to the grant, and that's where it was spent. So, it was an in-and-out. It's kind of a strange aberration on that one. There was also some good collections on tax title. June, was it one property or just a whole bunch?
No, one property.
One property that was a large, a large collection. And then, of course, you had the first year of the school debt exclusion, half the debt. You'll also have a bump next year, because the other half of the debt will start to kick in, in terms of the payments in '17. So, you know, John wanted me to at least explain what those three larger numbers were. But again, I don't like to look at anything over a one-year span, because, you know, things do happen, as we just discussed. But over that five-year average, you're getting something that I think makes a lot of sense, and it's right, right in the target area of what we like to see. Next is, again, I know we have a lot of numbers here, but the first two columns talk about the percent, budget to actual. So this is where, at the end of the year, how did your revenues compare the actual numbers to the budget? Same on the expense side. So those are those first two columns. And if you remember, we usually talk about trying to get, trying to stay around that 2%, plus or minus that 2% area, because if your budgets end up too tight, there's invariably gonna be one of those years when everything gets difficult. And, you know, the excise taxes might get slow, you don't have many building permits. So if you're too tight, especially on the revenue side, you could very easily end up in a revenue deficit, and you never wanna be there. And the same on the expense side. You may have a year like a terrible year with snow and ice, where you want that flexibility to do, to spend the reserve fund and/or do some year-end transfers to cover it, so you don't have to carry the deficit into the next year. So, you know, as I've tried to mention every year, again, we like to see that in the plus or minus 2% range, and you're pretty much right on target for that. So, I like to, I like to see a set of numbers like that. That's a good set of numbers. The last two columns, excuse me, show the free cash that you're using each year, free cash and overlay surplus, if that applies, against the budget, and then what you're using for capital. And I know the committees and the board have worked with the management group, and have developed a plan where you're trying to keep the amount that's going towards the non-capital piece of the budget to a consistent amount, so you don't become heavily reliant on it. And then, everything over the benchmarks that you've set of what you wanna keep in free cash, you're allocating to capital. And so you've been able to do that. And we're gonna see in some of the later slides, this last column has really come to pay double benefits, because by being, by having that free cash to allocate to your capital needs, you've basically not had to borrow, except for the school project. And that, that's a huge plus, 'cause then you're also not paying interest on that money in, out of the operating budget. Y'all say? Please jump in if anyone wants to say anything, jump on in. This shows the status of the town reserves. So when Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's does your bond rating, they're very focused on what does the town have for reserves. And that's typically defined as your free cash number, which the Bureau certifies, the Bureau of Accounts, Department of Revenue, and your stabilization fund. And, you know, we try to, we like to see, see that somewhere between the 5% and 15% range. And I realize that's a big, a big span of, in terms of dollar amount, when you, when you use that. But I believe you all have a policy that tries to stay within 8% to 12%.
Our policy is 5% to 10%, with the goal of trying to stay closer to that 10%. With our demographics, and the bonding agencies really like us to be, you know, 8% to 10% ideally. And it was one of the major factors in our recent bonding, bond rating upgrade, which, by the year ago, we got for the Lincoln Street project. And also a major contributing factor, when June went out the bond, 2.27% for 20-year bonds. Absolutely phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal.
And so, we're showing two sets of percentages here, and the reason, the reason I'm just showing that is, this is the percentage of the budget as of the end of the year, snapshot-wise. But because that free cash, in the first column, ends up being used during that subsequent fiscal year at town meeting, this is where you end up after the town meeting use of the free cash. And that's, that's the column you should be looking at when you're looking at your 5% to 10% benchmark. And so you've been able to stay in that lane, because you've transitioned to a consistent use of free cash towards the non-capital, and then capping the capital at whatever number it is, so that you can stay in this, in this percentage. And you've also had the luxury, I think, was it this year, last two years, of doing something with stabilization.
$200,000 into stabilization, after a long hiatus of not being able to contribute. And you can see in the right-hand column, you see the after-town-meeting use, the reserve going down. And the reason for that is, our budget's going up, we're not earning much in the way of interest on our investments, because interest rates are at all-time low. And so, we're using some free cash, $200,000, to contribute to that stabilization, to keep our ratios up. It's basically planned investments in the savings account.
Anything else on that? This is where I lose the audience. OPEB.
Not this audience.
Not that I haven't already. So, you know, if anybody's new here, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and it basically relates to your health insurance benefit for retirees. And for years, this was completely off the radar, and then a few years ago, back in 2009, the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, required that this liability be calculated, and it be put on your books. At least in the financial statements, not on your, not on your ledger, 'cause it is not a budgetary issue, but it's, it is a budgetary issue, but in terms of what, what the state requires, you don't have to put it on your general ledger, but it is required to be put in the financial statements. And so, you can see that there's been, every two years, you have evaluation. That's why it doesn't change, like from '13 to '14, and then '15 to '16, you have the same liability number in that first column, because you're required to get an actuarial update every two years. But that number's just gonna continue to climb, as the, you know, people get closer to retirement, the liability's gonna, gonna start going up. But what's mitigated that, and may someday hopefully reverse that, is you're starting, as you see in the last column, to fund the OPEB trust. So, that started in 2015 with a $500,000 contribution. That's one of the reasons on that first slide, we had a higher percentage increase in '15. And then in '16, another 500, and then, you know, you've earned a little bit of money from the investing side of it. So, over time, the plan and the hope is that you will be able to continue to do that, and possibly even increase it, so that at some point, you're at least keeping up with the increases every two years, when you get a new actuarial study. Next slide, these are the other two big liabilities of the town, which is, of course, your debt and your pension liability, which we'll talk about in a second. And this gets back to what I was saying earlier about the debt, which is, because of the, what I think is a very sound and wise policy on the use of free cash, you've been able to reduce the borrowing. So from '12 to '13, in '12, it went down from '11, '12 to '13, it went down '13 to '14. In '15, you had the first piece of the school debt issued, which wasn't, which you didn't start paying until '16. And then in '16, you had the second piece of the school debt issued, which you'll start paying in '17. But if you, if you strip that out, I had a statistic here. As you see, from 2012 to 2016, the debt only went up by 4.5 million in total, and that was adding 14 million for the school debt. So without, without that, you had a $9.5 million reduction in debt. And a good piece of that is your policy to use the free cash towards capital. So I think that's a great number, and that's something to be, you know, to be both happy and proud of, of the policies that have been put in place and kept in place. And then that last column, as we discussed last year, starting, you always had a pension liability. And that pension liability is your share of the regional system. The Worcester Regional Retirement System has a large unfunded liability, as every, most every public retirement system has. And starting in 2015, GASB once again said, you know what, this needs to be in the financial statements. We need to accrue this and show people what the liability is. So, that's a liability, it's gonna, it grew from '15 to '16, but the good thing about that is that you have, you're paying increased assessments. And the goal and the hope is that by 2035...
2035.
Thank you. That that liability will be gone. Because every year, when you pay your assessment to the Worcester Regional System, it includes a portion, a portion of that assessment is addressing the unfunded liability over time. Thing that's always tricky about these liabilities, including OPEB, is they're based on a lot of actuarial assumptions. And over time, those assumptions can change. So, I know John sometimes gets frustrated when I talk, 'cause he said, well, we're putting this money away, and then things, you know, things are getting bigger on the OPEB side. But there's so many assumptions in here, that if the actuary decides, you know, they have to use a different discount rate, or a different assumption on future healthcare costs, or people are living longer, all that stuff changes the dynamic. But on the pension side, the goal is by 2035 to have that fully funded, that number allegedly should be zero by then. And then finally, we have capital assets. So these are, this is buildings, infrastructure, equipment. And what I like to show about this, again, is, you know, as a community, are you reinvesting in the things that are gonna benefit the community in the long term? If you look at this in a town that's struggling, you will see probably at the bottom of the chart here, the averages being in the negative, because they don't have the ability necessarily to reinvest in their assets. You've been able to do that. Now, obviously, the building project in '16, a lot of the expenses hit in '16, 18 million, as I said earlier. So there was obviously a big jump in '16. But even in those years that you didn't have the big building project, you can see that in that first percentage column in the middle, you've been reinvesting. So your, your gross amount of your assets, which is before depreciation, has been going up every year. And on the far side, it's, it's after depreciation. So the big thing there is, you just wanna make sure you're reinvesting, that you're not seeing your assets deteriorate, because they're getting older, and the town doesn't have the ability to put the money back in and say, we need to fix this building, or buy, buy this piece of equipment, or do something to our roads and our, and our water, water and sewer infrastructure. So, all in all, I think that's the last slide. It's really a good, good set of numbers, and I think it all dovetails back to having the right, the right plans in place, to, you know, for the boards and committees to sign on to some of these things that the management group has presented, and you've adopted, and you're sticking to it. I think that's really important.
Thank you, Bill. It's not only the right plan, it's the right team, too, so...
Got a good team.
It's the team here at the, in Northborough. June and Jason and Kim and John, they do a wonderful job, so. I'll open up any questions or comments. Yes, Jason.
Bill, thank you very much. As always, a very clear presentation, and these metrics really distill it down and show you all the key points. Glad we were able to conserve a lot of your time and energy again this year, so you can direct that to other clients who might have.
We paid the same amount of taxes.
Really appreciate it, yeah. Thank you very much.
GASB's not making it any easier, that's for sure.
Leslie.
Yeah, I wanna say the same thing that Jason said, and very clear, easy to understand. Thank you for going through all of this, I appreciate that very much. Are you hearing anything new at all about OPEB, and how you, how the state is looking at it? Has there been any change at all in how they're viewing communities and their abilities to pay, or expectations, anything like that?
Not, not the state. The state, you know, all GASB can do is say you have to put it in your financial statements. They can't mandate that you fund it, they can't, and the, and the state certainly can't mandate that you fund it. Or it would be an unfunded mandate, I guess.
Wouldn't be the first.
By definition.
You say state.
Right.
You know, it really, people are, you know, you're probably doing, I don't, I don't have, you know, I don't have state or nationwide numbers, but from my own experience with my own client base, I can tell you that by having that half a million set aside, you're doing more than a lot. It still doesn't mean that the liability isn't growing, but it's growing at a lot less than it would grow. So, there's really nothing, there's a new GASB kicking in, in a couple of years, but it's really more on the accounting side than anything. But nobody from the state has come out and said, you know, we want you to adopt a plan, or you should adopt a plan to be fully funded by a certain year. When we all met and to go over the draft reports, before they were finalized, we talked a little bit about that. You know, how do you decide how much room you need to make in the budget? And you could treat it as an option, similar to the pension, which is, we know this is a big number, we know it's gonna take many years, the pension is, is gonna be another 19 years, you know, do you talk to your actuary and say, we wanna be fully funded in 20 years, or 25 years? What does that mean on an annual basis to get us there? And that's, that's what actuaries do. Or even more geeky than the CPA, so. But they, they could give you that answer. And that's probably, you know, that's probably, would be interesting information to have.
One thing I wonder every year, though, is, you know, there are communities who I'm sure are not able to do what we've done so far. You don't envision that certain communities will get a buy in this whole thing. Meanwhile, Northborough is, you know, putting a lot of effort into putting this money aside for this, and is doing a wonderful job.
They won't, they won't get a buy, because eventually, Moody's and S&amp;P have said that it's gonna negatively impact the bond rating. So, they're gonna be paying more to borrow. That's one, that's one thing. The other thing is, if you don't start putting money away, what's gonna happen in 20 years? And the whole reason GASB kicked out this thing to begin with is, they saw the demographics of what's going on, how many people are gonna be retired. So, the communities that, that can't or don't do anything, there's gonna be a point where, in addition to your current active employees and their health insurance, there's gonna be so many retirees on the plan, that the impact on your current year budget is gonna be pretty significant. And that's why, that's why GASB, they're very, they're a very reactive body. When they saw what was happening in places like Detroit, and some of the other older, bigger cities that have a lot of trouble, they sort of realized what these liabilities are starting to grow up to be. And they figured, if we get the accounting side done, it'll put the attention on it, so that people will start funding it. So that's sort of the hope. I don't think, I mean, I think, I think it's great that you're doing what you're doing. I think the communities that aren't, in, in terms of increased borrowing costs, as well as the impact on their budget, when more and more people retire and are living longer and longer, they're, they're gonna feel that pain in a different way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, first, thank you. Thanks to June, you and Jason, your team. This is great. You know, obviously, it's a great report, and, you know, I'm just wondering, is there anything else you think we should be doing, that we're not doing?
John's giving me the look now.
Pay the management team more.
I mean, nothing really, you know, the biggest thing that, you know, there's a management letter that's out, that has, you know, that, that, as I always say, is the smallest one I write of any community. And it's not that I don't tell people when they need to hear these things, 'cause I have management letters, I think yours have two, one or two comments. I have management letters that have comments in the twenties. And, you know, if the issues are there, you're gonna, you're gonna hear about them, the board's gonna hear about them. So, there isn't anything, the only thing that's in the management letter, and it's, you know, it's a big undertaking, is there's this whole thought that, you know, a formal risk assessment process gets done. I don't know a single community that's done it, but it's one of those things that the accounting bodies that regulate us auditing people suggest that we suggest to you. And you've done pieces of it, I mean, you've done a lot of the risk assessment pieces, they're all there. They just recommend that there's some sort of consolidated formal document at some point. But, um, there's really nothing, it's been, you know, it's been nice and steady and clean for a while here, which is nice, and hopefully it'll, you know...
Is that accountant terminology?
It's a vague statement, but, you know, and it's not, you know, it's just not that way everywhere. So you've got a, you know, you've got a good board, you've got committees and boards that, that I think are involved in the appropriate way, you got a good management team, and this is the product of that, you know? Doesn't happen by accident.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, so, so Bill's our independent auditor. His, his objective view of how we're doing is what you're hearing. Now you're gonna get the, the not impartial. The management letter is the best management letter, I'll match it up against any other town, it's as clean as they come. There's always things that you can be doing, or, in Bill's case, he's identifying new things that are coming down the pike, that we should be thinking about and preparing for. But there are no material deficiencies or weaknesses in our, in our management letter. It's as clean as they come. That's a credit to June, Albert Ward, our finance director, and Jason Little, our town accountant. They do an excellent job making sure that we execute the budget the town meeting gives us throughout the year, and we come out the other side in a positive way. The other thing is, the financial discipline that we show through the boards and committees, you have policies, we spend a lot of time debating and adopting formally these policies, but then you gotta live by them. It's kinda like in your personal life, you go meet with a financial advisor who says you should be saving X dollars towards your retirement, but then you don't implement it. It doesn't matter that you have a plan or a study, unless you implement it. And it's paid off in spades. Our free cash policy has, has, we've, we've done incredible investments in our capital, we have reduced our debt, we added a $14.85 million bond for the Lincoln Street School, and our debt went up $4 million, because we've paid off that debt in the ensuing time. So we aren't charging the credit card, we're not running up the debt, we're bonding for things that are appropriate, that have a 30-plus-year lifespan, and we're bonding those for 20 years, that's appropriate. In your personal life, again, you probably have a mortgage, you might have a car payment. For us, the washer, the dryer, anything else you want, we are paying as we go for those things. We're not running up the credit card. So, when we look at our budget, and we look at the foundation that our whole finances are built upon, there's no gimmicks. We're not doing one-time tricks, we're not deferring maintenance. You can save a lot of money in your personal life as well, if you don't maintain your furnace every year, if you don't tune up your car, if you don't fix your roof, if you don't paint your house. So you can look like you're doing really well. But we all know what happens in the long term, when you don't take care of those things. And that's the defining difference, in my opinion, between a town that's run well, boards and committees that are well-informed, is that you understand those long-term implications, and you make sure that they get worked into the annual budget process. And to that point, this Thursday, here's my plug, this Thursday, at seven o'clock in the library, we will be meeting with all the financial boards and committees in the school department, to go over our financial trend monitoring report. Which is where we look back 10 years, we trend all the things that Bill covered, all the things that the bond rating agencies are watching. We trend all those 10 years looking back, we forecast forward five years. And it's in that context that we talk about what we're able to do, and our goals and objectives for the upcoming fiscal year. And it's that perspective, and that information, I think, that makes the difference between boards and committees that are lurching around and aren't really sure what the right thing to do is, versus the boards and committees that we have in this town, that are unbelievably well-informed, that have this information. It's why you're able to go to town meeting with the unanimous support of every board and every committee, for all budgets and all capital projects, because you know what you're doing. And this is, this is key. And it's interesting, 'cause, you know, some of these numbers look a little different. If you get a $300,000 grant for, for a land, a tri-town land grant, it shows up in Bill's calculation as revenues. And you're probably wondering, where did, where was that 6% revenue increase? That's what I saw, and I said, you know, we did it. So there's some differences in the way he, we look at it from an accounting reporting standpoint. But the financial trend monitoring is all based on a budgetary basis, which is how we operate and how we look. And that's why that report and that process this Thursday is so important. And anybody, any citizen, or staff member, or board or committee member that wants to come, I highly encourage you to come. Because the more people that have the information and understand, and have that perspective, it means that it's easier for us to get on the same page about what our priorities are. Bill mentioned OPEB, we're gonna be, we're gonna be talking about OPEB on Thursday. But we're gonna be talking about a lot of things. But, but again, on behalf of the staff, I wanna thank the Board of Selectmen, because you guys have always had a very disciplined, long-term, professional approach to how we manage this town. And we know when we bring these plans to you, and these policies that you listen, and we adopt them, and then the hardest thing is what you guys do, is you live by them. And you go to town meeting, you stand up, and you say... And you go to town meeting, you stand up and you say, "We are doing this because of these reasons." And the nice thing is, you've all been on this board long enough that you're seeing five-year trends and accomplishing all the things that you said you wanted to do when you got on this board. And that is very satisfying, when you see this stuff pan out the other side. And it's very satisfying for staff, because a lot of staff in towns, you know, we can come up with these ideas, but if nobody's listening, if nobody's willing to stand up at town meeting and advocate for these things, then it's all for naught. And, you know, that's not the case, and it's the thing I'm most proud of in Northborough. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And I know the Pats are playing tonight, so I'm not going to say anything else.
It was pretty long-winded, I was getting ready to kick them.
Yeah, I was thinking.
What's going on here? Bill, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Good presentation. Okay. Let's move on. It's now past the hour of 7:15, we have a hearing to consider a request for a Mormax Corporation DBA BJ's Wholesale Club for a change in offices and manager of record for the all-alcoholic package store licenses for premises located at 6102 Shops Way. Do we have a rep- yes?
You do, Kathleen Riley.
Sit right down, relax.
We have filed an application to reduce our directors to one, Mr. Robert Eddy as president and director, and Arlene C. Feldman as secretary. We have also submitted an application for a change of manager in Northborough from Veronica Porter to Ms. Diane Marera.
Okay. That's what the folks at home can hear you too. Any questions?
Just.
Go ahead, Jeff.
No, just, just a quick question, I guess, it's been due.
Yes, I thought it was special.
Thank you.
Yes?
I move the board vote to approve the request from Mormax Corporation doing business as BJ's Wholesale Club for a change in officers and the manager of record from Verona Porter to Diane Marera for their all-alcoholic package store license for premises located at 6102 Shops Way.
Second. Your motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Thank you.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's now past the hour of 7:20, we have another hearing to consider a request from Wegmans Massachusetts Incorporated doing business as Wegmans for a change in officer from their all-alcoholic package store license for premises located at 9102 through 9104 Shops Way.
Good evening, gentlemen. David Krumsek for Wegmans. And this one's a little more straightforward, it's just a change of officer. We have a secretary of the corporation who is retiring, and Mr. Paul Sparansen, he's being replaced by James Leo. And that's really it, it's business as usual, other than that.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
All right. Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the request from Wegmans Massachusetts Inc., DBA Wegmans, for a change in officers for their all-alcoholic package store license for premises located at 9102 to 9104 Shops Way.
Second.
Your motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thank you. Okay, now, past the hour of 7:25, we have attorney George Pember, approval and execution of preservation restrictions for the First Parish Unitarian Church located at 40 Church Street pursuant to warrant Article 37 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting warrant. George, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. George Pember, and I, I'm here asking your approval of a preservation restriction on the two buildings that are located on the First Parish grounds at the intersection of Howard Street, Whitney Street, and Church Street. Basically, what this document does is it says that the town recognizes the historic significance of these buildings, and the town is asking the current owner and all future owners to keep the exterior appearance of these buildings as much as possible, the way they look now, so that future generations can appreciate the historic significance of the buildings. This has a very, been a very complicated process. We've been back and forth between the Mass Historic District Commission, Mass Historic Commission, rather, several drafts of the documents before they finally said, "That's okay." Believe me, they gave me models to follow, and then they changed their mind, so. It was, it was quite a process. So, the preservation restriction agreement has been voted approval and signed by the president and clerk of the church. It's been signed by the Northborough Historic District Commission. You're up next, the selectman, and if you vote to approve and sign this document tonight, then the next final step will be to send it in to the Historic District Commission, Historic Commission, excuse me, the Massachusetts Historic Commission, where they'll have to review it and sign it. Back to us, we record it, then we can finally get the funds which were voted. It seems like a generation ago, so we can do the necessary repairs on the church. And the repairs are definitely necessary right now, because there's tremendous leaking up in the roof, and it requires someone to go up and bail it out periodically. And it's just, it's a mess, and it's got to be dealt with, so I'm asking your approval of this, this evening.
Okay.
Just a real quick question, when are you hoping, or when is it expected that the repairs will take place? The ones that you mentioned in your-
My understanding is that the building committee is already talking to contractors, and they're waiting to pull the trigger once we get this signed and back.
Okay.
Which is great, because I know it needs it desperately, desperately. It's crazy, the process you have to go through, isn't it?
It's quite a process, yes.
Okay, yes.
I move the board, board vote to approve and execute the preservation restriction as approved by town council for the First Parish Unitarian Church located at 40 Church Street pursuant to warrant Article 37 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting.
Second. Your motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It all went that fast, you have to sign something.
You have to sign, yeah.
We'll sign it as we talk.
He's going to take over.
Okay.
I need a copy.
Whoa.
Watch me assign these.
Before you leave, you'd have to come back.
Actually, I can take one. They're in alphabetical, box names.
Oh.
You have it at the top, but the others are all alphabetical.
Okay. It's okay, started.
Before you move on, Bill, just a-
Yes.
For all five members of the board, did you sign that document freely?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
He's going to notarize.
I'm going to notarize.
Oh, okay. I've raised my hand, did anybody else?
I did, I did.
We're going to need to, we're going to need to see some ID.
Sorry, I don't have any ID. Well, we're, well, we're signing, there's just two pages, two front pages you need to sign. Make sure you check the-
Do we need to sign the individual statements?
That's his signature.
That's him, though.
Oh, oh.
So, do we just untalk?
We'll start reports. Jeff?
Well, they're signing, so. Just real quick, I just wanted to thank all the folks that came out for the tree lighting ceremony last weekend, and especially wanted to thank the Community Affairs folks for arranging that like they do every year, everything else they did. Let's see, the folks from Legion, Vincent Picard, the honor guard, also the kids from Z School, I believe the choir, they did an unbelievable job, I tell you. I've heard a lot of quote-unquote "kids choir" singing, and they really did an outstanding job. So, again, just thank you to everybody, it was a really nice event. I don't know, I'm guessing, what do you think, Billy, 400 people?
Yeah, I'd say four, yeah.
It was by far the largest, largest crowd I've ever seen at it, and it was just a really nice event, so thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. We'll go back. Jason?
Yeah, I was just going to echo Jeff's sentiments, thank the people involved for putting on such a great event. I want to thank Jeff for speaking on behalf of the board of selectmen, and also just acknowledge Mary-Kate Ellsworth, who once again, in her rendition of the Star Spangled Banner, just absolutely killed it, you know? I mean, just did a terrific, terrific job, and very impressed by such a beautiful voice. So, it's nice that she can do that on behalf of the family at this ceremony, which honors Neil Ellsworth. So, thank you all very much, I appreciate all the effort that went involved, including police, fire, and DPW for their preparations that went into that. So, thank you all very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Leslie?
Okay, I wanted to specifically thank Lisa Hodge and Care Tucker and the Community Affairs Committee, they did do a wonderful job. And I actually, the one thing I did miss was Bill singing specifically. The choir did a great job, but I do like hearing you sing.
A raspy voice.
Yes.
That's what that was.
It was a nice event. It was cold.
Screaming? Yeah, that's me, yeah.
Thought there was a fire.
It was cold, but it was nice, it was a good event, great event. Beautiful job with the trees, the way those lights were put on very evenly and very nicely, I noticed.
Yeah.
Very nice. I was very impressed with that.
Fine job, I have to tell you.
Yeah.
They were the sex men.
Yeah. Looks nice when you're coming down Route 20, and you look toward, toward those trees, it looks pretty. I'm also loving the new light that is now working at the Northborough Crossing main entrance as you come out of BJ's. Now, that's our true four-way stop, I think that is a wonderful thing to behold up there. I hope that that's working properly, does that seem good, chief?
It's on a 30-day trial, I believe, to make sure that all the equipment's working properly. But it's privately owned at this point, so.
Yeah, yeah. But I think that's, I think that's a great addition up there.
Time for Christmas, which is nice.
Yes. Yeah, exactly.
There's a lot of traffic.
Yeah. I just wanted to remind everyone not to forget about the Northborough Food Pantry. I know that the recent scout food drive was very, very, very successful, but over the holidays, it's also important to make donations. And you can check nfpantry.org if you want to look, look up the list of things that are currently needed. I also wanted to remind everybody to be aware of crosswalks. I know it's not summertime, and there aren't quite as many people out walking and running, but there still are people, and when it's cold out, they're even more in a hurry to get across the crosswalk, so. And some things may be covered up until, you know, the street plows can do what they need to do. So, I think residents do need to continue to be very, very careful at the crosswalks. And I just wanted to thank Chief Liver for his monthly report, thank you very much, good information, and I'm sure we'll see the fire soon.
Should we have mine?
Oh, did we?
Yep. Scare me, I thought I did.
Sorry, we're looking at it. Thank you very much.
See what happens when you move to Northborough.
It's like a void to nothing.
All month.
But thank you very much, appreciate the information, thank you. That's my report.
Oh, Jeff already did.
No report.
No report.
They were together.
Okay, I just wanted to echo what everybody said about the tree lighting, it was great, and Jeff did a great job about, you know, explaining to everybody that was there about, you know, the, the significance of the tree, of, you know, play the death of Neil Ellsworth who was killed in Vietnam. Also, we got a note too today from the chief that Jamie Desatell graduated from Anna Maria College with a master's degree in public administration, which is great, I mean, with family and working full-time and getting a master's is huge, so.
Significant amount of work when you're trying to do work and have, yes.
Give a shout-out to him, so thank you.
Congratulations.
And also, just wanted to let everybody know that the town hall will be closed on Friday, December 23rd, to observe the holiday, so it's a little gift for, from us to the town hall employees, so enjoy yourself, and if you're like me, you'll be shopping for the last minute, so. And happy holidays to all. John?
In light of that, no report.
Okay. Okay, moving right along, public comments. Okay, moving right along, new business.
Phil Patriots.
First thing on the new business acknowledgement and acceptance of notice by Tatabi Environmental Services to realize, and, no, to release and relinquish the flammable storage license and tank storage permit for premises located at 345 West Main Street.
Actually, I can just speak to it briefly. This was an issue that was before the, the board previously, the site had changed hands, and we were getting caught up with the new owners with the permits for the tanks, and we were going through that process. They decided to just remove the tanks and relinquish the license, and this is actually something that the fire chief and, and my office are actually pleased with in terms of the outcome. So, they sent the letter, it's in your packet, where it says they hereby relinquish and release the tank storage permit under the recommendation of town council. You need to formally vote to accept that, and that puts an end to this, this matter entirely.
Excellent. Jeff, yes?
Quick question.
So, they're pulling the tank out, is there any kind of environmental testing that's
done?
It's all been done.
Beautiful.
All been done.
Any other questions? Hearing?
Motion?
Yes.
I move the board vote to formally acknowledge and accept the November 3, 2016, letter from Tretabie Environmental Services LLC voluntarily relinquishing the tank storage permit and the flammable storage license for the underground and above-ground storage tanks for premises located at 345 West Main Street.
Second.
Your motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Okay. Renewal of selectmen's license for calendar year 2017, which we always do this, it's all licenses of liquor licenses and common vixial licenses. I've been inspected by the fire and building department, all licenses who hold Class 1, 2, or 3 license have been inspected by the police department, and all are in compliance with both municipal and state code regulations, except for-
Giuseppe's asked not to renew their all-alcohol licenses for the premises located at 35 Solomon Pond Road, so somebody's purchasing that, we'll work with them. I have to just say, the coordination between the new fire chief and the fire department with our building inspector, our new building inspector was absolutely phenomenal. They got this work done in short order, and one of the things that, that the businesses commented on was that us coordinating and going there as one group, and sometimes, you know, with the police as necessary, we only interrupted the businesses once, we got through everything, and just, I can't say enough about how smoothly the process went this year. Very pleased, very pleased with the outcome.
Excellent. Okay. Do I hear a motion? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the renewal of the annual licenses by the board of selectmen for the calendar year 2017 as indicated on the 2017 license renewals list, as all are in compliance with both municipal and state codes and regulations.
Second.
Your motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Next thing is to set the meeting schedule for January through April, if you can believe it. As put in your packet, we have a meeting scheduled through January through April, and there's no conflicts or any holidays, so it seems like it's going to be the second and the fourth Mondays. Thank you, John. In January, February, and March, and April.
Noting April 24th is town meeting.
Town meeting.
Yep.
Any conflicts for anybody? Yes?
I'm not sure on the, the March 27th date, but.
Okay.
I don't think you're sure on the April 10th either, are you?
Yeah. You're right. Don knows my schedule better than I do.
That is the night of the, that would be the night of the joint meeting between the board and the appropriations committee on the budget.
Oh, that's the joint?
Yep. On the 20, March 27.
March 27.